Fine by me.
Okay, alrighty.
Can you hear me?
Member Kelly in motion to approve the minutes. Do I hear a second?
Second, Rick.
And who seconded it?
Susan.
Okay, thank you Susan. Any discussion? Hearing none.
John, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, good, thank you.
And that was?
David.
Hey David, just joined the meeting?
Pardon me?
Okay, um, alright. So Kathleen presented a motion. No discussion. Everyone say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
No, 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 I've gotta have each individual say Paxton, aye. Kevin, aye. Kathleen, aye. David, aye. Susan, aye, please.
John, if I can make a recommendation, why don't you just call out the names and they'll, they'll either say yea or nay. They'll keep it orderly.
Got it, Paxton?
Nay, I can't remember what's in them.
Well, sorry. Then you're fucked. Okay, so you, okay, nay for approving the minutes?
Yes.
I didn't get the package except for tonight's business, sorry.
Not a problem. Kathleen, yea?
Aye, yes.
Alright, Kevin?
Yea.
Susan?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Okay, carries four to one, approved. Okay, new business. Um, before I turn it over to Zach, I just want everybody to know how excited I am for this project to be coming to Cape Carteret. Okay? Um, from what I understand from Zach, um, this is a preliminary zoning hearing to approve what they want us, what they would like to do in our town. And I am definitely 100% behind it. I have questions, okay, as far as pervous, pervious and impervious area, but it's not a deal killer. So with that being said, Zach, I'm gonna turn it over to you. Hello Zach?
Alright, thank you, thank you John, um, how do you wanna proceed with this this evening? Do you wanna go item by item or do you wanna just uh see if there's any questions pertaining to the specific conditions in the uh CSP checklist?
Um, let's answer any questions first.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and if uh we can kinda hop right in for that.
Okay, uh out of curiosity, is somebody from uh the Paramount Group or um Cedar Creek on the line?
Yes sir, this is Tim Quiglscales with Paramount Engineering, I'm on the line to answer any questions.
Hey Tim, thank you for joining us.
How you doing sir, first, can I?
Okay, can I call you Tim?
Yes sir, yes sir.
Good enough, alright.
Hey everybody, this is Jason Swain as well, I don't know if you can hear me, but I'm uh, I'm the property owner.
You're David's son?
I am, yes sir.
Okay, thank you for coming.
Yes sir.
We're very, we're very excited about this.
We were excited about it too, so thank y'all for having us tonight.
I wish we could be live, anyway, uh Zach, you want me to go first?
Yeah, that'd be fun.
Okay, uh so Jason and Tim, uh my, my main concern is the, the cheap asset of our community, which is our public waters. Um, and being a green builder, we're allowed to be shy of an acre and we're doing some big impervious numbers. Is there any way that we could possibly discuss about onsite water retention, especially since we've been having a lot of six, eight, 12-inch rainfalls in short periods of time? Which I'm sure Jason, you know the problem we've had across the street with the dam.
Yes, well, yes sir.
So, um, that's my only hurdle, if, 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 if there's something that we can do to improve the impervious pervious calculations, I'd be thrilled. I would love to recognize to go to the Board of Commissioners, but I would love to see aesthetic construction-ready plans for final approval, if that's okay with you.
Sure, let me, um, Tim, if it's okay, let me, let me sort of start and uh give a little bit of an overview and then I'm gonna defer y'all to Tim, who's our engineer and who will know the details far better than I do on calculation and things like that, if that's okay.
That, that's fine, that's where you pay him, right?
That's right. So, let me start by saying, first of all, we're really excited about this project, um, we really believe that the um, that, that the new Starbucks is really gonna be um a big addition to the town of Cape Carteret. We were very excited when we had the opportunity to step up and buy the PNC Bank, uh we felt like it's um, it's been a good part of the community for a long time, but it's, the structure has outlived its usefulness. And we really felt like if we uh could buy it, we would have a good opportunity to bring someone um like a Starbucks or a good quality user of the market. So then, when we were able to convince Starbucks, we were all very excited. So, uh let's address a couple, a couple of different things, the first of which is probably the most important and I totally understand that. Living here in Wilmington, I, I certainly recognize that our natural resources are very important and uh are a top priority. And so, right now, uh the way that the site, it's my understanding, the way that stormwater is handled to the site or at the site, is that the water accumulates and then just sheet drains out to the DOT catch basin. So what we are planning to do is we are planning, we are adding additional impervious surface, no question, because the footprint of the bank is um, is so small, we could not reuse the building, although we did look at that. Um, but we're adding impervious surface and we are gonna be adding a couple of, a couple of, doing a couple of different things to try to mitigate the impact on the water. One, instead of sheet draining all the water to the street, uh it's my understanding, we're gonna be installing a swale along a portion of the project and Tim can address this uh in greater detail, that will catch uh and then treat some of the water or will treat the water before it goes um to the catch basin. And so, not only will that help to um, I guess the best way to say this is it'll help to control how the water um dissipates from the site, but it will also um, it will also catch sediment and um, and the sediment will infiltrate uh before it gets to catch basins as well. So, um, we're gonna, in addition, we're gonna improve the landscaping along the property, uh you know, we really want this to be a showplace and so the plan is uh, is to upgrade the landscaping and really make it uh something that we're all proud of at the end of the day. Now, Tim, I'd like, if you don't mind, will you chime in and talk a little bit about um how the, the stormwater management is gonna work on the site?
Yes, so yes, we are, yeah, existing right now, there, all the, all the water goes directly into the, uh some of it goes to Gulf and Dolphin and some of it just goes straight into the right-of-way for those uh, there's a catch basin shown there, a curb inlet right there at the, uh let me make sure I'm doing my directions correct here, but it's at the corner of Gulf and Dolphin and our property and then obviously there's the uh, um, uh the swale is on the left side of the property, measure on the, on 24. So we are now gonna obviously, and the curb and gutter that was there, was there before was kinda curb and gutter, curb and gutter in name only, it was not high enough that the water just spills over the top of it. And so now we're gonna have to do real curb and gutter and we're gonna, we're going to convey the water into our uh storm drain system, it's shown in the plan there, as you're seeing on the screen. And we will now get it to go into that existing ditch, that's, that's what it's there for, to, it was built obviously to, to um, to handle the water um on these sites. And we're also, and you see it, the um, in the swale, there, there's a, a block there that's shown to end of that pipe in the ditch, that's a riprap apron, yes. So that will be used also for both, both velocity reduction and to uh handle some sediment. Um, and then whilst, then at that point, the water will be in that ditch and then that swale, this grass and, and you know, maintained based on the maintenance agreement will also be used for any uh sediment control. It, it will infiltrate some as well, that's correct, infiltration, but also just, you know, cleaning of the water, um, um, just cleaning the water that's uh, that's, you know, that's, that, that travels in, in the ditch. Um, so there is storage in that ditch, that before there was, it was all just uh peeking into those catch basins and going straight into the road. So now we're gonna use the.
And that's the crazy question. Is there any way that we can retain, retainage of the water in that ditch by waiving in it and making it deeper? And maybe at um, right there in the curb and gutter by the um, what I'll call the wazes, maybe funnel some of the water that away? Because the, the whole problem is, is, and I know you guys live in Wilmington, I know you guys experience the same things that we do. You know, we get those freak storms where we get six, eight, 12 inches and, and, and trust me, it, it, it's crazy. But, bottom line, our town is suffering from drains here, I don't wanna add to those issues, if we could look at an option or two maybe? Is that asking too much?
I mean, I would say it's, nothing's ever asking too much, but on the ditch, the problem is if we make it any deeper, we don't have the, we don't have the width to make it any deeper.
Gotcha, gotcha.
So that's the issue with it, even, I mean, if the, I mean, we just don't have the width to make any more contours. Um, I mean, they might be able to make it one foot deeper, I don't, I mean, we'd have to get a little, I mean, I'd say there's, there's a way to, to make sure that, that um, you know, I don't know how well it's maintained, I mean, cause that's usually the, a lot of times in these existing systems, the, the maintenance is usually the reason um that there is flooding issues, there's debris. And so I know that Jason and his, you know, and, and, and his group and, and you know, Will, you know, on his, on this site, which is, you know, a couple hundred feet long, which is the most important, a couple hundred feet of the whole system of this ditch, cause it's about to go into the right-of-way, Will obviously continue to maintain, maintain it as needed. Um, and so at the same time, I think that, you know, the other option would be for, for some water quality, I, I talked to Jason about, we could, you can, you can put a sump in the catch basins that will, that will uh let the debris fall out and that allows for some water quality. And then that also helps with the ditch not being clogged up, because the sediment will stay in the basins and then they pump it out and they, um, you know, every, you know, three months or six months as needed, um, put a one-foot sump in the uh, um, in the catch basin, which means if the inverse in theory is, is, if the bottom of the pipe is a foot, you'll make, you'll make the catch basin bottom one foot lower. So what, as the water sits in the catch basin, it, it, the debris falls out and all the sediment stays, some of the sediment stays behind, which again will help with both um water quality and also, like I said, it won't get in the ditch and that will also allow the ditch to handle the flow it needs to handle.
Jason, you okay with that? Jason?
Oh yes, I'm okay with it, yes, you know, the biggest thing here and Tim is, uh I have found in uh dealing with them, they do a lot of our stuff around the state, they are very creative and uh, you know, the biggest constraints that we have is just, we've got a really small site here. And so to be able to get everything on it is just challenging, but yes, I'm in agreement, Tim, you know, if we can make that, uh if we can, you know, make the swell as deep as, as safe uh to do, then I'm in agreement with that. And then if we can also do the sumps like you said in the catch basins, which will not only um, uh slow the flow of the outlets and also clean the water, I think that's a win for everybody. I mean, at the end of the day, let's all, let's all remember, you know, we've got a site here where the water's not being treated at all, so I'm excited that we're able to do something um and really do some positive things here that will, that'll, I think, be good for everybody in the long run.
Without a doubt, without a doubt. Okay, um, basically that was my biggest concern, so as far as zoning goes, it looks like you got pretty much everything listed.
Hey John, John is Fred, I got, made you two, two questions about uh the stormwater. One is, I love it, they're uh, they're taking the uh water into the uh DOT drainage system. Where does that drain come out, beside of uh 24?
Down at the church, goes into the church ponds, if I'm not mistaken, Tim, am I wrong?
Um, I mean, I, I don't know where ultimately, I mean, I know it goes, you know, on our page here, left to right or um east to west, but I, I don't know the ultimate, um, but you know, the DOT obviously sized these pipes supposedly um for um, you know, off-site, off-site drainage. And they have a, you know, and that's why they, and they have a curb, they have a catch basin and they have a, a head wall there um on the site.
No way does that water go into the um, the quote two ponds in front of the churches, am I correct?
I think it goes into the church ponds.
Uh, bad news bears.
Fred, that's why we're trying to retain as much water on site to slow down the flow and when we do put the water in the pipe, if, if it's been filtered naturally by the grass and the catch basins on the left side, we should be in a much better quality situation.
I mean, sealed is what, this is Tim again, again, honestly, there's, you know, impervious is impervious, but this is an existing shopping center and it's been, but the, the, you know, assuming that the maintenance is done like it's supposed to, which a lot of times it's not, I mean, it has nothing to do with who's, it's just, it's developed, it's changed hands, all this stuff. But if you can get the, the sediment not into the ditch, I mean, that's obviously why, that's why the pipes clog up and that's really where the flooding usually happens. And so by us putting the sumps, the drops and the manholes, that will allow those, that, that sediment to, you know, a, a fair amount of it to fall out before it gets in the ditch and to minimize the issue itself as it goes into that ditch.
Alright, Fred, you got another question, cause I think I hear Susan with the question.
Uh, well, the second question was, was any consideration given to uh, like in the parking areas, to making that a pervious surface? So the water would go straight down into the ground and not have to worry, uh blow off to any of that asphalt?
Um, I mean, there, there was some um thought on that and, and we looked into that, but based on the ditch elevation, um, there wouldn't have been, it wouldn't have been like it is on a lot of places where um, it just wouldn't, I mean, it would, the, the groundwater elevation because of that ditch is what it is. So it wouldn't be as much infiltration as there, as there would be, it wouldn't be bang for your buck as it would be on sites that didn't have a, you know, most sites don't have a outlet like we have here. So that's why the, you know, the perv, the pervious parking lot necessarily wasn't gone that way because of the, um, cause of that ditch on the left side. And um, it really would not necessarily, um, it wouldn't have that much storage.
You mean the, the ground underneath that lot does not have enough storage?
Well, I mean, again, based on this, on this particular site, it's just, it doesn't necessarily have the same as it would on something that doesn't have a, you know, we have a ditch beside here and so um.
This is, this is a very sandy soil and the water goes down mighty fast.
Yes sir.
Mr. Judge, this is, hey Tim, Matt, 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 for just a second, sorry. Mr. Judge, I think when, when Tim and I talked about it, we talked about using as many tools in our arsenal as we could to try to make sure that we uh, that we mitigated uh and uh ensured that the stormwater that we uh that came off of the site um didn't impact anybody around us. And after we went through all the, all the analysis, it became pretty clear that um, while we do have sandy soils there, the boat, the most, like Tim said, the most bang for our buck is to leverage that swell and depth of the um, I mean, the depth of the sumps as well, so that that water would flow in a directed way. I will say this, the infiltration rates up there, you know, we all know that we're close to the beach and, you know, we're far better off with infiltration here than we are in the western part of the state. Um, but I will say that it's sort of hit or miss in the area as well, you know, in the back of the shopping center, um, we've been, we were working on some different things, trying to figure out how to expand um, expand uh sewer treatment facilities for different parts of the shopping center. And we were having, we were having real trouble with infiltration rates back there, quite honestly. And so, um, after sort of going through all of the different options, um, I think, and Tim, you tell me if I'm wrong, that the, we, we all get the biggest bang for our buck by um, by having the pipe sized as they are underneath the, underneath the parking lot, so that they're catching that water and running it from the catch basins uh to the ditch and storing uh, you know, additional stormwater in there uh while it's running as well to the ditch. And then making that ditch so that it uh filters the water well and then slows down that flow off so that as much can, uh as much can absorb into the ground as possible. Now, Tim, you tell me if I said any of that wrong.
I mean, again, I think the, the ditch, that's what the ditch is gonna do, yes, I mean, the ditch will both have the capacity for big storms and, and, and when it, when, when it's not raining, it will, it will infiltrate. And so, I mean, there's, um, so the capacity in that, in that ditch will handle, um, you know, some of the, some of the water that goes on, um, obviously, you know, it's, it's, yes, I mean, that's, that's what's, that's what it's there for and um, and yeah, I mean, I, Jason, you're right, and then again, putting the riprap apron and, and the sumps, getting rid of the water quality issues and then the ditch handles the storage.
Yeah.
And again, we understand that we started it, we, we didn't start at ground zero on impervious, I mean, we are, we're not adding this whole site as new impervious as well, I know that's understood, but just to, just to make sure that's, you know, reiterated again, I mean, um, this is all not, this is not all new, and we know that, but it's, it is, I mean, there already is impervious there and right now the impervious has no water quality features at all. It literally just sheet flows to wherever it goes, which is straight to the DOT, uh right-of-way, straight to the catch basins and the head wall and the Gulf and Dolphin roads, so now there'll be no flow going into Gulf and Dolphin roads.
Who else had a question, Susan, did I hear you?
I, I do have a que, actually, I just want some clarification, so is, is the, will stormwater go from this property over to the retention ponds at the church across 24?
Ms. All, I think, I think the answer to that is that uh the water goes from, uh this is Jason by the way, um, the water goes to the um, it'll go to the pond and then it goes to the DOT catch basins, what, what hasn't infiltrated. And I don't think that, um, I don't know, and I don't know if you know, Tim, it sounded like you did not know where that DOT catch basin ultimately goes. I know it will handle capacity and a certain portion of the water actually sits in the, it sits in the pipes and evaporates, but I don't know where it term, where the terminus is.
So the reason I.
I do not, I do not know that, sorry.
The reason I asked that question for clarification is when it, when somebody, previously, it's hard to tell who's talking, uh, when they said, yes, the water would make its way over to those retention ponds, someone else spoke up and said, not good. So I just wanna be clear on, on two things, is it going over there and why is it not good if it does?
Well, Fred said not good. We've always assumed that everything that came through DOT ended up in the retention pond in front of the Baptist church and that all the stormwater from the Swain property and the Lowe's property and Reallo and Gulf and Dolphin all came to that stormwater pond situation. And, and nobody really ever, unless, we've never got head ass built as to where those go. I don't even know if they're available.
John, this is Paxton, I'm not so sure.
Good evening.
Good evening, I'm not so sure that the water does go to those uh ponds, but I think it's a question that we should have answered.
How do we find that out Paxton?
Well, the, the engineers would ask DOT.
Okay. Tim, is that something you mean?
I mean, we can definitely ask, but I would say that I would, I mean, I think we can hopefully get an approval from this board, I mean, we're talking again about 9,000 square feet of impervious over the whole drainage area that goes to these pipes on the DOT. And so, we'll definitely find out where it goes, I'm just, we'll definitely find out where, where it needs to go and what, no issue um doing so, but um, the percentage of this impervious is gonna be very small in relative to the drainage that goes to those pipes.
I would not propose that we hold up this process by any means, I'm, I'm all for moving ahead, but since several members have raised the question, I think we should ask.
Well, I, I wouldn't think they would hold us up Paxton, and I, and I'm sure.
I don't want it to hold us up, I just, we should ask the question, that Tim should ask the question and try to find out.
I think that's, I think that's very reasonable and Tim, is that something that you can do and uh then have an answer back uh for the board or for the uh Board of Commissioners meeting when we, when we all next get, or when we get together with them?
Yep.
Hey, this is Zach, I, I can answer that question, I was looking to see if I could locate the map, um, if you look here over at Gulf and Dolphin Drive, that would be the start of that pipe, you see where it crosses 24, then heads east along 24 and does um end up at that location over there uh by the two ponds by the church, which I also mentioned that NCDOT controls that stormwater feature there now as well.
Good, excellent, thank you Zach.
No problem.
Hey John, I, I just got one more thing and, and I'm not sure this really is on Swain or Starbucks problem, but if that's, if they get a lot of water on that storm drain going down, you know, our current problem with the undercutting the road right down there at the main entrance to the shopping center and the Lowe's food, won't that aggravate the devil out of it if they get it, if we aren't careful?
That's a D, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct Zach? That's a DOT issue?
That's, yeah, that's part of uh DOT's system, so they'd be responsible, um, you can see here, it'd be on the south side of Highway 24 that heads to the pond, so in terms of those issues that they have ever on Enterprise, this water that's moving on the, on the south side of Highway 24, headed towards the pond, headed east, um, that would not impact that pipe that goes across Enterprise Drive. Um, this would be down, down flow from that point, so I don't think it would, I don't think it would impact the Enterprise Drive issue.
Thank you Zach, that, that point says a lot for me.
Thanks Zach, Jason, I really appreciate you having that available, that's, that's fantastic.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sorry, I can't see it, I'm talking on the phone, anyway, alright, anybody else have any other questions?
I have one other question.
I'm sorry, go ahead Paxton.
So Susan, after you.
Well, I, I don't have any other questions about water, but I do have a question about our checklist, um, or, or can we talk about the checklist?
We haven't gotten that far, but we can, that'll be.
Okay, never mind, never mind. I just didn't know where we were.
Okay. Paxton?
Yes, my question is, according to what I received, there is an off-site septic field. Where is that?
Hey, hey, Paxton, this is Jason. I'm gonna, it's behind the, it's behind the shop, we'll be behind the shopping center, and it looks like it's, Zach has pulled it up here on the screen. I'll let Tim address it in greater detail. And I'm happy to ask, answer any broad questions.
I would assume that this is an area that gave you trouble as far as absorption.
That's right. We would, yeah, we would not be using an area that would give us issues, issues with perking. I mean, there, there are all kinds of different ways. Sorry, go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, Jason, I mean, we, yes, ma'am, we've, we've done soil testing in there. That's why we, that's why we put it where that cloud is. And I'm not, I'm saying that because there's, there's other land that we bypassed. But this is the area that the, the environmental consultant has said that based on, we gave them what our flows were for this proposed use and, and that. And again, it's obviously not just that, just not that clouded area. I mean, it's in that general area that will, that's where we'll get the permit through the health department. And so we will have, we will pump a, we'll have a pump on site that, that pumps it to this drain field.
So what is your flow?
Um, it was plus or minus 2,000 gallons a day. Let me see if I can find the exact number, but I'm not sure if I can find it off the top of my head, but it was plus or minus that. And that's based on the number of seats in Starbucks.
While you're looking for that, I'm assuming you're going to dig up Gulf and Dolphin Drive to get there.
Um, there's enough room on the, there's, it's a 60-foot easement that, and easement right away that we have. So it should be able to be not, not, not dug up. It will be, it will be in the, in the, there may be some driveway, you know, some entrances of the Hardee's and all that that we have to go under. But we're not going to drill the road. It'll be on the, on the sides.
Tim, Gulf and Dolphin Drive is paved every inch between the Walgreens and the PNC building. And it is full of potholes. And if we dig it up, all I'm saying, I'm not opposed to it. It's, it's perfectly okay. I'm very aware of the easement and that you have a right to use the easement for this purpose. All I'm saying is, I really, really want somebody to pay careful attention to resurfacing that area that's dug up and joining together. And I'll pay my share of patching potholes, which is in terrible shape right now.
Um, Tim, let me, let me interject. Ms. Holtz, I, I completely agree and have no problem with that whatsoever. And just as an aside, we have engaged an engineering firm that is looking at the best way to go about fixing the long-term Gulf and Dolphin Drive. And they are in the process of working on that as we speak. And so I hope to be able to come in the not-too-distant future with some, with a plan and some recommendations for how we can fix Gulf and Dolphin Drive once and for all, and, and resolve those outstanding issues, which, as we all know, continue to be perpetual life source for the community.
Jason, I'm 100% in favor of you. I will certainly pay my share. And kudos to you for doing that.
Thank you. I think it would be-
Sorry, I couldn't pass that one up. Okay. All righty. I said, can I get that in writing?
I, this is, this is Brett, the Sales of Towns attorney. We, we need to make sure that, and I know we're just engaging in a conversation generally, but the, the approval and what we're looking at today, we, we shouldn't be able to condition that approval on improvements to the roadway, the access roadway. I mean, I understand that this was, generally speaking, just a conversational topic, but we shouldn't be able to require the applicant to, to put that in writing or anything of that nature, as that's not contained in the, the ordinance in question.
Brett, I was asking, being in writing with Paxton.
I understand that, but in, in the form-
It was managed-
It'd be more appropriate if those conversations were offline.
Okay. Anyway. Moving forward. Anybody else have any other questions?
I'm having trouble hearing. There's some pounding or clicking going on, but I, I would like to point out that the users, the adjacent property owners to Gulf and Dolphin Drive have an agreement in place that is recorded of percentages of, of easement maintenance that we're responsible for. I, I note that on the former PNC building, the square footage of the former building is 1769, which is only 1.10% of the maintenance required for Gulf and Dolphin Drive. It will change slightly when the new building is built, but it's really insignificant. And John, that formula is in writing, and I'm sure you'll be able to get a copy whenever you want it, because that's a very important thing for the safety and beauty of the town of Cape Carteret.
Uh, Brett, is that something that we can do internally?
Yeah, I mean, certainly you can speak with the landowner about that. It's just as part of the review process for their application, that's a little bit outside of the scope of a review.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. So Paxton, I guess you and Jason have to work that one out. Is that correct? Brett?
That's correct.
Okay. All righty. Okay. Let's go on to the checklist. Anybody else have any more questions before we go? Back?
So John, do you want me to go through item by item? Is that what you're asking?
Like you normally do, please.
Okay. All right.
And- Go ahead.
So 156 dot 123, building size, is the building size in compliance. The applicant has indicated yes. And I was like, go through these, because there's a lot of items. If, if there's a question or something that pops up, please feel free to, to speak up so we can stop on that item. 156 dot 004 and 153 dot 020, height and density is the height and density and compliance. The applicant indicated yes.
Just go permitted. Just read, read the highlights, and you don't have to do all the ordinance numbers.
That works for me. All right, permitted sign, applicant indicated yes.
I, I have a question about signs.
Go ahead.
This is Susan. It says our signs are compliant. How do we know? I didn't see anything that said how big the sign is, what color it is, where it is, how tall it is.
Uh, let me, this is Jason. Let me, I can address the, the sign. The Starbucks will want some kind of a sign, whether it's a, a low-profile monument sign or a pylon. I'm not exactly sure. They, they don't specify that until later in the design process. But the agreement that we, with them is that obviously the sign will conform with town standards and code. So we will, we will comply with whatever the town code is, just FYI, of course.
Okay, well, that's-
Yeah. So, so that checklist, then, guys, I'm new, so I'm going to always ask these stupid questions until I hit everything the first time. So this is say, this is basically your agreement, Jason, that you're going to do all these things? Or is this saying that it's already, your plan is in compliance with our ordinance?
Well, I, I can tell you that our plan will comply, but I guess, I guess I would need Zach to weigh in on, on exactly what your, what the forms are saying.
Yeah, so what the requested act, so what the requested action is, at the, at the conclusion of the checklist, is for the planning board to provide either a favorable or unfavorable recommendation of the proposed CST to the Board of Commissioners. Traditionally, in the past, the board, you know, if there's a specific item on here that, like, for instance, the permitted sign, that might not be available at the, at the point in time when the application is made or when the CST is submitted. So the planning board might stipulate, you know, approval with the condition that, you know, 153 dot 04 permitted signs is complied with, and that that information is supplied at the appropriate times of the town. On the permitted signs, typically what we would do is if they're not available at the time that the CST is applied for, the applicant would come back at a later date and submit for a commercial sign permit. And that's how we verify compliance with the code of ordinances through that process. So there are certain provisions on here that would come at a later date once the applicant and what the business have decided on exactly what they want. And then we would confirm that it conforms to the code of ordinances.
So when we go through this checklist, if we have something like this, where we don't know what their plan is, so we can't really say that it's in compliance with our ordinance, can we just say, can the checklist not say yes?
Yeah, I mean, the checklist is more as like a guide to go through the, but like I said, I mean, you could always condition approval, you know, so long as the applicant, you know, conforms to Section 153 dot 04 of the code of ordinances, you know, as stipulated in the checklist. So you could always, when, you know, you make the motion, you know, and-
Right.
For the CSP, you could always condition that motion by putting that, that into that motion.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Susan.
No problem.
Please, Susan.
Yeah.
You there? Okay. Please understand, the final construction-ready drawings will have to include all that, plus Schedule B, plus all the architecturals, plus all the structurals. And everything will have to be approved by the town and by the county before anything can start. That's why, that's why I asked Jason that we take a look at the finals before they go to the board. Okay? All right. Zach, sorry.
No, I'll talk again. Yep. And, and just maybe to expand on that point a little bit. So as, as John mentioned, there, you know, certain components will go to certain different regulatory agencies. So the county will reveal, you know, will review it for building code. You know, if there was a state stormwater permit required, you know, DQ would review it from that side. So, you know, before any of these, for instance, the septic system, Carteret County Environmental Health reviews for compliance on that. So there are, you know, before they can start construction, there are multiple regulatory agencies that also review it for compliance. So just wanted to, to expand and add that in there as well. John, do you want me to continue?
Everybody happy?
Yep.
Let's go, Zach.
Wait, John, I, I've got one question. When are they going to have, normally, we would say, I would condition, you know, to approve, recommend approval, but it would be like, hey, we want to see this sign planned before the Board of Commissioners meeting. Is that still in play or not?
We are, what we are looking to do tonight, and let me be very clear, is to prove this project proceeds with our zoning ordinances. We are going to have to make some exceptions, correct me if I'm wrong, of our practices. Normally, we require, as a board, for as long as I've been on here, and I asked my mother, and I know I talked to Paxton about this, full construction plans to be reviewed. But this is such an important project, we need to let the Swains know, we're good with this. We want this. Okay? And then, once everything gets, if they want to come back here to answer everybody's questions with the final, I think Jason and Tim would be more than generous with their time on that. And we can address all these other issues then. What we want to do is send this project to the Board of Commissioners with, we want this business in our town. Because let me tell you, and Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, once Starbucks puts their roots down in Cape Carteret, watch out. Things are going to happen that you've never seen before in this town.
Uh, I think that us being able to get Starbucks to come to town will be a catalyst for us to be able to do other things. I mean, you know, we've just, as mayor-
Thank you.
We've gotten-
All I can say is thank you, Jason.
Oh, sure.
I'm a traffic man.
Well, I, I will say this. I will say that, you know, we've gotten Jimmy John, I mean, excuse me, Quiznos has closed at the shopping center, and Jersey Mike's is coming. And I, I do believe that in no small part, they were willing to come because of the good news with Starbucks as well. So, you know, there's a lot of good things happening in the shopping center. And I think this is only going to improve and help to attract other great users to the town as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All righty. Go ahead, Zach.
All righty. Sidewalk regulation, the applicant has indicated yes. Required screening and buffer zone, applicant's indicated yes.
John, Zach, Zach, go back to your sidewalks. When was that approved by the board that they don't have to have a sidewalk on 24?
Uh, it's probably been two years ago. But yeah, they're not required to install a sidewalk for the code of ordinances.
The only reason I ask this is that I picked up the, the book, and it says one thing, and yet we're going with something, I'd just like to know when, because supposedly that book was updated pretty good about, oh, what, nine months ago?
Yeah, and I, and I can pull up that section if we need to, and let me see.
Look, I've got no problem with it. I just, I reckon it's, it's a problem of the book not being up to date. If you're telling me that they don't have to have a sidewalk, okay, let's go.
I'd like to know, Matt.
Okay, go ahead, Zach.
Change to, uh, commercial from, I know residential was taken out for sidewalks, for subdivisions. But when was commercial taken out?
See if I can pull up that section real quick. That would be, uh, hold on just a minute. That was updated, the ordinance was passed on October 8, 2018. Let me share the screen.
So it specifically says, commercial, new commercial construction doesn't have to have sidewalks? Or was that just, oh, gotcha, thank you.
Yeah, so that's, that's the wording right there on the screen.
All right. So it did- All right, so it did remove residential, as I remembered. But it says shall be installed in all new commercial shopping center developments. You're saying this is not a new commercial shopping center development? Is that?
Yeah, that would, that would be, that would be my interpretation of, of that ordinance, is that this is not a new shopping center.
It's a remodel. In my mind.
I'm with you.
You, go ahead, Zach.
All righty, um, so required
Go ahead, Pax, what's the matter?
No, 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 I was just reading down, reading down a little bit. Um.
Go ahead, Zach.
Go down just a
All right, screen, the buffer zone.
No, on this, uh,
Oh, I can't see what you're looking at. Sorry.
Oh.
You're drawing something on the screen?
Yes. If the property being developed, redeveloped or improved runs on the northernly side of NC twenty-four, then the developer shall install a hike bike trail ten feet wide.
They're, they're probably southerly side.
Pardon me? Pardon me?
They're, they're
They're on the north of twenty-four.
Okay.
Yeah, so the way that this is inter- Yeah, so the way this is interpreted is that we refer to section A for installation. And this is something that, uh, attorney de Sums and I have talked about before, is that A stipulates where it's applicable. So really, section B, um, is followed after section A. Um, but we look to section A for the interpretation of what, what types of development this would apply to. So like, if this was a new commercial shopping center development on the north side of Highway twenty-four, then it would be required to install a ten-foot-wide, um, hike bike trail.
I'm good with that. I just wanna make it clear for, for the benefit of this, what is what? Since Fred brought up the question.
Are we good?
Are we good, Fred?
Fred.
Fred.
All right.
My hearing aids aren't doing good. What'd you say? You answered a question.
Are you good?
I'm good. Let's go, man. I'm on the Starbucks. He might don't like his coffee, but I'm on here.
Okay.
All right, go ahead, Zach.
All righty, so off-street parking, um, reference to Article C, applicant in, uh, indicated, yes. Commercial building and other permitted uses, um, indicated yes for the submission and review of the site plan, yes, for the fire hydrant located within three hundred feet of the principal structure. Uh, not applicable for section Z and C, um, tentative approval by the Carter County.
Where, where was that fire hydrant shown? I could never find it on the big plans. I'm, I'm going blind, old age.
Yeah, this is, this is Tim here. It is, it is along twenty-four, um, in front of the, um, Walgreens there. Um, so it's not shown in the plan, but it's on, uh, kind of in the middle of that, middle of the, um, front is on twenty-four, so it's
At about a hundred fifty feet, Tim.
It's, yeah, it's, it's probably that, but it's, it's about two seventy-five to the building, but probably a hundred and fifty feet on the, on the, uh,
Road.
Yep, Walgreens property.
There, Fred?
Yeah, I, I just didn't know where it was. That's all.
Go ahead, Zach.
All right, tentative approval from Carteret County Department of Environmental Health, um, applicant indicated, yes. Uh, tentative approval of dredging and filling permits, not applicable. Um, inspections of sites involving public rights of way and onsite construction, applicant indicated, yes. No required off-street parking located within existing or proposed right-of-way, applicant indicated, yes. Off-street parking, applicant indicated, yes, for both A and B. Uh, no provision may be construed for reduction of the number of off-street truck loading slash unloading space required, applicant indicated, yes. No part of off-street truck loading slash unloaded, unloading located at the right-of-way, applicant indicated, yes. Truck loading slash unloading space must be on the property, applicant indicated, yes. Installation of directional regulatory or advisory signs and pavement marking, applicant indicated, yes.
Is that? Zach, let's back up a minute. Where are they gonna do the, uh, loading and unloading of the trucks? I could not figure that out on drawing. Are they gonna do it like, you know, on that, on which side are they gonna bring that semi in, or will they use a semi?
Uh, I don't know the answer to that. I don't, I don't know if they do use a semi. Tim, do you know that?
I do not, but we have done the, uh, traffic auto turn with the, the prototype that, um, Starbucks has told, you know, has let us know, but I don't think it was a semi. So we've run the traffic, I mean, the, uh, truck radius to make sure it has, you know, get, getting it out of here.
All right, so Tim, before Fred jumps you with this question, let me ask you. How are fire trucks gonna this building? Is the turn radius good for, for what we've got in Western Carteret Department?
Yes, sir. Cause we have, cause we have those that, yeah, it is, it is.
But I just want to get it out there before, yes, it comes. Okay, all right. You okay with that, Fred?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
All righty. Zach.
All right, let's see. All right, so I think we're at number twelve. Any parking at roadside businesses located off the existing right-of-way, not applicable. No part of the right-of-way used for, for conducting private business, um, applicant indicated, yes. Right-of-way improvements in accordance with NC DOT, our Code of Ordinances, uh, applicant indicated, not applicable. Evidence of all NC DOT and other reg, or other agency permits submitted, um, applicant indicated, not applicable. Appropriate lighting plan, um, applicant has indicated, yes.
Wait, wait a minute, Zach. Zach, when are we gonna see a lighting plan?
Fred.
And, and, and that, just, just answer me one thing. Are, then, are they gonna be LED lights that shine down and not up toward the atmosphere?
Uh, Zach, this is Jason. I think I can, uh, address that. The photometric plan has not, uh, been done yet, Mr. Josie. That's generally done, um, a little bit later in the process. But to answer your question, yes, um, we're converting, uh, virtually, well, we're doing it as much as we can. It's hard when you're retrofitting a whole lot easier on the front end. Uh, but we're using LEDs, high-efficiency LEDs, and most all of our projects now. And I would anticipate Starbucks is very energy-conscious as well. And, uh, I would anticipate that the photometric plan will call for that, um, here as well. Not only is it, uh, better for all the neighbors, but it's also, uh, cheaper in the long run, energy-efficient wise.
It's a green thing, Fred.
They'll also, uh, be dark sky-friendly, if I can put it that way. Am I correct?
Uh, I guess, I guess so. Now, I, it used to be that the, uh, the sodium, um, the sodium-based, um, the light fixtures used to be sort of indiscriminately angled toward the parking lot. But technology's gotten so much better now that the lights, the high-efficiency LEDs shine, basically shine down towards the parking lot are no longer angled up. Um, and so I think, I think to answer your question, the answer is yes. We're not gonna be casting, um, light everywhere, like the old, old-timey lights, I guess, for lack of a better way to describe them, used to.
That's super. Thank you.
Of course.
That's it.
That's it? Fred, we're not halfway done yet. Anyhow, go ahead.
Don't worry, we still got to go. That's it, I'm ready. All right?
I didn't say that.
All right, so moving on to number seventeen, appropriate survey markers are shown and installed, applicant indicated, yes. Uh, number eighteen, uh, no sign device or marking erected on or overhanging any public street road or right-of-way. Uh, no moving, flashing to give the illusion of movement, or resemble traffic control devices within twenty-five feet of any street road or right-of-way. Applicant has indicated, yes. Ten copies of the site plan, must accompany the application, applicant provided those and indicated, yes. Site plans submitted are on the scale, um, applicant indicated, yes. Site plan sealed by licensed, uh, P E R surveyor, applicant indicated, yes. Property ownership information is listed, TCB Rightsboro LLC. Uh, the recorded owners and location of adjoining properties, that was not answered up. I think that's on the plan, but, um, the name of site plan, our proposed development, Starbucks, Cape Carteret.
Is that a yes or a no?
It's one package. It, it's a yes. I just missed that one when I was circling. When I was going through all the circles, I just missed that one. It's, it's got the joiners on there, man.
Okay.
Yeah, you can see on the site plan, they've got Hardee's and Carteret Crossing LLC.
Okay.
Go ahead, Zach.
All right. Data point preparation, yes, true North Arrow, yes, traffic representation of scale use, yes. Sketch vicinity map, yes, zoning designation, yes, zoning designation of abutting property, yes. Acreage of the site, the nearest tenth of an acre, yes. Boundary survey, um, yes for A and B. Uh, nature of all existing and proposed streets, yes. Uh, installation of fire hydrants for one fifty-six at one twenty-four, um, indicated not applicable. Uh, existing and proposed features information. Uh, number one, um, location names, pavement and right-of-way width of all existing proposed streets and all easements, curves, curb cuts, hike bike trails, sidewalks, abutting property or properties in question within two hundred feet, applicant indicated, yes. The topographic contours, five-foot intervals, applicant indicated, yes. Location of all existing and proposed setbacks, dimensions, landscape areas and fencing, applicant indicated, yes. Location of proposed utilities, facilities, including fire hydrants, fuel storage tanks, and showing the connection to existing supply and disposal systems where applicable. Applicant indicated, yes. Location of all existing slash proposed signs, traffic control devices, lighting standards and utility poles on or abutting the property, applicant indicated, yes. Flood zones, uh, not applicable. Location of area is subject to the Army Corps of Engineers four-four wetlands, not applicable. Delineation of any and all AECs as defined by KAMA, uh, not applicable. All watercourses, wetlands, estuarine waters within the site and within six hundred feet in any direction, indeed, that would be, uh, not applicable. Um, site improvements included, location of existing and proposed principal building, yes. Um, location of all accessory buildings and structures, uh, indicated not applicable. Finish grade elevations at all corners, um, applicant indicated, yes. Indication as to whether or not a building will be retained or removed.
Zach, what, what, um, what page did they have the, uh, indication? Let's see, it was the indication at the corners. Now, I never found where that was on one. Maybe I'm going blind too, where the pins are.
The site plan.
I just curious.
It was C, hold on. Two-point-oh would be the property corners. And, um, and then, and then, um, four-point-zero would be the, um, corners of the building, finish floor.
Thank you, Tim.
All right, no problem. Let's go.
Go ahead, Zach.
All righty, um, our indication as to whether or not the building will be retained or removed, yes. Proposed building, um,
Question, question.
Type is indicated.
Zach, I'm sorry, this is Pax. I'm assuming from the plan that the build, the existing building is gonna be removed. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
No problem. All right, the proposed building type is indicated, are they indicated, yes. Number of floors and dimensions, indicated, yes. Finish grades for the entire site, uh, applicants indicated, yes. Size and locations of all water mains, connections to existing water supply system, applicants indicated, yes. Existing or proposed sanitary sewage facility serving the site, applicant indicated, yes. Storm, storm drainage systems, including the following, um, applicants indicated, yes, for all existing proposed sewer lines within or adjacent to the site. And indicated, yes, for location of each catch basin inlet and manhole. Um, for items C through F, um, the applicant is indicated not applicable. Uh, for seven, um, the applicant is indicated not applicable. Um, for Deaner and, Deaner included for broke stream, alternative proof relocated. Um, for condition eight, when a broker's stream is proposed for alteration, improvements or relocation, applicant is indicated, uh, not applicable. Uh, when ditches, streams, brooks or watercourses are to be altered, improved or relocated, um, applicant is indicated not applicable. Uh, number ten, location, type, size of all existing and proposed curves, curb cuts, sidewalks, drive, driveways, fences, retaining walls, signs and parking space area, applicant has indicated, yes. And tabulation of the total number of dwelling units, and that one is not applicable for this project. And, and that concludes the CSP checklist.
Thank you, Zach. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I do. It's Kathleen. Um, the, the hike bike, the hike bike trail, did I hear that they weren't gonna do that? And I was gonna say, with this virus, I live on Star Hill Drive. There are bikes and hoverboards and skateboards. I mean, it's just all day long. And they sold out of bikes at Walmart. So I don't know if this would hook up with Gulf and Dolphin or not, but if, if it would be feasible, it would be, I think, a good idea.
Well, Kathleen, because of the, uh, revised commercial plans, they are not required to put a hike bike
No, I know they're not required. I just thought it might make good business sense. Don't know, you know, but, um,
But please understand the entity that we're dealing with. Starbucks is a very, very green company. And I'm sure Jason, um,
Oh, I get it. Okay, okay. It's just, it's just an idea, John.
No, no, no. Kathleen, thank you. Okay, anybody else?
I, I, I have a couple of questions. This is Susan. Um, do we have, do we have any kind of schedule for the project?
Jason?
Um, let me, I'll, I'll tell you right now where we are. Um, I have a signed lease with Starbucks, um, that has taken me a number of months to wrangle. Um, and, uh, we have designed the civil portion of the plan, um, so that, uh, we can approval. The, uh, next thing that will happen is once we, if, if we are fortunate enough to receive your approval tonight and we move forward, then the architects will begin, uh, drawing full bore there. Uh, they're working on the design process now, but I think they're about twenty-five to thirty percent through. They're at a, a hold until we get through this part of the process. Um, our goal would be to begin construction in the springtime um, and then get them open as soon as possible. It will probably take a hundred and twenty days from the time that we break ground, uh, to get the building and site, uh, constructed. So my guess is that, uh, probably late summer or fall, um, we would be in a position to have the store open. Um, but that is certainly subject to a whole bunch of different factors on the construction side. Um, but that is certainly subject to a whole bunch of different factors on the construction side and Starbucks side as well. As you can all imagine, they are a huge company and tend to move fairly slowly when we need approvals on, on different, uh, development things. But as far as I'm concerned, I, we want to get going ASAP and get this thing open. I'd love to think that it could be open for the, uh, for the season, this coming season, but my guess is that we probably will miss it.
Okay.
That's awful impressive, Jake.
And, and I just want to be clear. What, are we leveling this buil, or are you leveling this building and rebuilding a whole new building?
Yeah.
At, at first you said you, you were hoping to use the building.
Yes, ma'am, answer your question. We are demolishing the building. We initially looked at reusing the building. Starbucks has some creative uses, uh, and, but when we looked at it, there are several limiting factors, not the least of which is the size and the fact that there's a vault in it, which made it really difficult to reuse. Uh, so we've decided that the best thing would be to, uh, to demolish the building, and that's what this plan illustrates.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, I, I tried to interrupt, but if anybody would like the bank vault, if you will haul it away, you may have it for free.
Oh, please.
I'll try to help you with that.
Hey, wait a minute, Pat, I, I shouldn't say this, but Paxton, you needed the house?
No, I have one. No, I don't need one.
You don't need another one, huh?
No, but I'll try to help.
Let, let me ask a question, Fred, we cover everything that we need to cover?
Yes, it appears that you finished the checklist at this time, um. Zach, have we got, well, I don't know, no, I don't think we finished the checklist, did you?
Yep, no, we've, we've, we've completed the checklist, and then, uh, right now we'd be looking for a motion, um, to either for a favorable or unfavorable recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. Uh, we have it scheduled for their December 14th, 2020 meeting.
Right, and it's my understanding that's already been noticed, so, uh, pending this, this, uh, approval, then this will be heard at the December meeting, December 14th.
Yeah, that's correct.
Well, we, we would like to see, Brad, structural and final drawings before commencement. I, I'm fine with approving the, the initial site plan so that the Board of Commissioners can say, we're good with it. But I would like to just see a set of site pla, final construction drawings, if you don't mind.
Mr. Chairman, will you, uh, entertain a motion?
Uh, what motion would you like to make, Ms. Paxton?
A move to approve the application for commercial site review for the Starbucks with the following requirements. That we see the sun, as Susan asked us, is we can, and that it comply with town ordinances. And we see a copy of the Carteret County Department of Environmental Health Septic Permit when it's available. When, uh, we see the size of the trucks and where they'll unload for Fred. When we see the lighting plan.
So you're talking about finals?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, but I'm, I'm moving to approve with these items. Okay. That's the motion.
Okay.
Just for clarity, um, Ms. Holtz, I, I assume what you're saying is you're moving to approve, provided that they provide these, um, items once when they're ready and that they are in conformity with the town ordinance, correct?
Exactly, so that you can move ahead.
Okay, perfect. That way, if, if they present plans that are in conformity with the town ordinance, then it's just a, a matter of checking the box and moving on.
Yes, sir.
Perfect.
Is that you, Brad? Fred, I, I don't see who's talking. Was that you?
Tell us the term.
Okay, I was just asking because I, I hear the voice, but I don't know who it is.
I, I understand.
Alrighty. Uh, I will entertain a second to the motion.
Wait a minute, Paxton, did you finish your motion?
I believe I did, unless there was something you wanted me to put in it.
Nope, not a thing, but goes in, I was waiting to say, I second the motion.
Thank you, sir.
Fred, you're not a voting member, so let's, let's stick with the voting members. Do I hear a second from Kathleen, David, Kevin?
Second from David.
Alrighty. Any further discussion?
Me.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry. David?
No, nothing for me, I'm, I'm in favor.
Alright. Alright, I'm going to call the vote. Paxton, yes or no?
Aye.
Under the commission. Aye?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fred? Okay. Kevin? Kathleen? Oh, Carrie, on to the commissioners.
Thank you, everyone, this is Jason, thank you, everyone, uh, we really appreciate your experience tonight and, uh, all the great questions. We really look forward to a, a great project, something that we can all be proud of. Uh, and we continue to be very excited and pleased to be a part, uh, of Carteret, uh, County and your, and, uh, the town Cape Carteret.
Jason, let me ask you one question. What else you got up your sleeve?
We, we're working on some good things, uh, you know, as you know, we have acquired or we're getting ready to acquire the Marine Federal Bank out in front of the shopping center. And, uh, that's good interest from folks there as well. So, uh, we hope to be able to, uh, be coming forward with a, a plan for the redevelopment of that site in the not-too-distant, uh, future. And I think it'll be, um, we think that with the folks that we're talking with right now, um, y'all will be pleased and proud with, uh, with what we end up with there. It'll be far better than, than what we've got right now.
Chick-fil-A would be wonderful.
I would love nothing more than to have Chick-fil-A. I, I assure you, they are high on our priority list.
There's a guy in Moorhead that's interested, that's all I'll say.
Thank, I, I really appreciate, I had heard that as well, and I really appreciate you, uh, you, uh, sharing that with me again.
Well, whatever it can do, promote our town, I'm all for it.
We will continue to.
For everything tonight, Jason.
Well, thank you very much, thanks to.
Go ahead.
No, thank you, everybody. With all that, I will, uh, I will bow out and, um, look forward to, look forward to the next, yeah, thanks, y'all.
Alright, thanks, Jason.
Yes, sir, good night.
Thanks, Jason.
Yes, ma'am, bye.
God, hour and 20 minutes. Alrighty, any public comment? Any public comment? Barbara?
Not seen anybody, uh. Seen anybody who.
I just think that, um, this project may be a catalyst for a lot that we can't, can't even envision at this point in time.
David, what we, what we did tonight, and I hate to say this, is groundbreaking because the demographics, and Zach backed me up, of what when Starbucks locates into your town, what else is feasible? And we need to start thinking about, and I hate to say it, sewer, anyway.
Well, just driving by and seeing Starbucks here sends a message to people that I think rings, uh, through to them that the area is changing and this is a great place to be.
I am so thankful that they are even considering us, because if you look at their company philosophy, there are a lot of avenues, we could ask them for maybe once every day a year, collect a penny for the CC trail.
Sure.
And all those, those throughout the world. Sorry, Zach, I didn't lay that one on you the other day, but that's something I'm thinking. Okay. No public comment?
This is Susan. Did I hear him say, did I hear Jason say that, um, Jersey Mike's is going into the Quiznos location?
Yes, you did.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't see any of that because they're just moving into that space, right?
Um, yeah, that's, that's correct. It's just a, uh, they wouldn't be expanding the footprint or doing anything to change that. So, uh, that, that commercial zoning permit's already been approved and they're moving forward on that. But hopefully we'll see them opening up in the near future.
Okay, thanks.
Zach?
Put that down.
Is it the same people that own Swansboro?
I believe so, yeah.
Well, thank God, because they're big supporters of Back Back Friends, so, okay. Anybody else got anything? Info sharing?
I do have a question, I have a question. Zach, you said that the, uh, Jersey Mike's had already been approved. Is there a, uh, change in the sewer requirement, the flow? Has that been addressed? Because it has not been addressed with the sewer provider.
Uh, I'm not sure on that side of it. I don't, I don't think they increased the number of seats. If anything, I think there might be fewer seats in there. Um, but that would probably be something for the landlord and, uh, for the wastewater plant operator, I guess, to discuss.
I'll call him tomorrow.
More info sharing? Anybody else got any info?
None here.
Everybody good? I just want to say thank you to Zach. Um, I know you've worked hard to get this to come here. I know you're working hard for this here, so we all want to work together, Zach. So the planning board is your ally, and I want you to know that. That being said, I want all the planning board members to make sure they call all the commissioners that your appointment's coming up in February and you want to be reappointed. I want to wish everybody Merry Christmas. I want to wish everybody to be safe in the new year, and God willing, we'll all get together in January. Please keep Dennis Cox and Fred, excuse me, uh, Busque in your prayers. Other than that, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I have one bit of info sharing. I'm delivering your point setters to the town hall, and I hope you'll be about to pick them up sometime this week. This is Paxton. Merry Christmas, God bless you all.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Pax.
Anybody else got anything?
No, it's good night.
Alright, I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, David, second.
Kathleen, I second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, the dog doesn't count. All of them. Aye?
Aye.
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 Hi. Kathleen?
Aye.
Hi. Sue? Paxton?
Aye.
Alright, Carrie. Alrighty. Everybody have a great holiday season, and thank you for making history tonight. Wow, is all I can say is wow, this is big.
It's a new day.
It's a new day.
Keep us going, thank you so much for straightening the meeting tonight, John. It's a little bit awkward, uh, and certainly not as seamless as it would be, but thank you so much for keeping it that way. I think you did a very good job of spearheading this, and thank you very much for everything you've done, and you as well, Zach.
Thank you.
Thank you, Zach.
Thank you, John. Make sure everybody, uh, check your emails, because we did send out, uh, we did our connect with Cape Carteret for the month of December. So, uh, if you're signed up for constant contact, check out that video. It's got a lot of good information about upcoming, um, Christmas events that we're having in the town. So definitely be on the lookout. It's also on Facebook, and it'll be on the town's website.
So, so who made the video about, uh, Santa Claus?
Uh, that, that was me, and, uh, we had some great, uh, very talented actors, uh, that appeared in that as well.
That video was adorable.
Thank you, thank you. Everybody did a great job with it.
But, yeah, um, who's Santa Claus? Will?
Oh, we can't, can't reveal that.
Alrighty, anything else?
That's, that's everything, hope everybody has a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thanks, don't forget your point setters.
Alright, Zach, give me a howl.
Bye-bye.
Goodnight, all.
Alright.
Bye-bye.